I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So when does she plead?
Mr. Hawkins?
You don't have to.
We'll now call this meeting in order. Mr. Garrett, would you call the roll?
Mr. Hawkins?
Here.
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Mr. Pruitt?
Miss Mel?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Isby?
Here.
Okay, you should have received copies of October 23rd, 2018 City Council Agenda. Any corrections or comments?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes submitted. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is seven to zero. Before we go any further tonight, ladies, coach, everybody, y'all come on up here. Mike Mason, you too.
Y'all gotta come on this side over there. Come on, oh yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah.
Want you in here.
Oh yeah.
A field goal is a scrimmage.
Y'all gonna make it?
Everybody, this is the 6A State High School volleyball team, Conway, Wampst. Anyway, ladies, y'all, I went there and showed some stuff and made us proud here in Conway, our side. Does everyone up here? I'm a Wampst graduate.
Me?
I'm a guy real good.
No.
We're all proud of you. This is a proclamation honoring the 2018-2019 Conway High School volleyball team, class 6A state champions. Whereas Conway High School volleyball Lady Cats have an impressive overall record of 29 and 7, defeated Fort Smith Southside in four sets for the class 6A state championship. And whereas the Lady Cats finished second place in the 6A Central Conference. And whereas Carly Ferguson, we got her, was named MVP of the state tournament for 22 kills in five blocks. That sounds vicious, 22 kills. Whereas the team consists of three all-state tournament players, Carly Ferguson, Madison Bay Tree Madison, and Emma Mayberry, where you at? And whereas Kelly Ferguson and Carly Ferguson and Maddie Fairchild were named an all-state 6A team, where you two ladies? Whereas Conway High School volleyball Lady Cats are coached by Laura Crowe and Chelsea Fason, lady. Now therefore, I, Mark Gasbri, Mayor of Conway, City of Conway, do hereby congratulate and acknowledge all the achievements of the 2018-19 6A state champions, the Conway High School volleyball Lady Cats.
You can leave your alone, man.
Well, that's just my mind.
Go Cats.
Thank you guys, thank you very much.
Everybody go to Mike's place on the mayor.
Thank y'all, congratulations.
Congratulations.
State champion.
I'm telling you.
Thank you.
Got something to brag about now.
It's exciting.
Next, we have a report of our standing committee, starting with community development. Mr. Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Golly, we're short tonight. Hi, Kiara, how are you? This is an ordinance to approve bids and appropriate funds for construction of a splash pad on Fifth Avenue Park. Yes.
College.
It's there, yes. We can. So, 200,000 dollars out of the 2018 funds will be for this project, the rest will be leveraged with parts of recreation for additional apartments as well as ADA sidewalk additions, the accepted proposal from RJR Construction for 365,000 for a 5,500 square foot splash pad, the ones similar to the one they were part of. So what you see is just the proposal, but it will be similar to that. I make a motion to waive the three readings, second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance, and I have it as 105.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Iverson, tell me if I'm speaking out of time here.
All the ordinances, ordinances combined with that amendment.
Okay.
Isn't a typo in section three shouldn't say ordinances instead of resolutions?
Okay.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Just asking.
So we need to make an amendment to the ordinance?
So moved.
Would that change?
Second.
Would that change?
Also, it says AV funds actually, impact funds.
Okay.
Sheila. So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Iverson, just don't let me speak out of time. We're planning on removing the softball field from that area?
Yes, within time, we're planning on pulling the poles out, we'll remove those out, and then make it a large open space.
Okay, so we're...
Get ready to close.
I know, but as a city, we're reinvesting in Fifth Avenue Park, and it's gonna be really, really nice. So, thank you, Mr. Iverson.
Just to double check, since we're gonna change the impact funds, do we need to, is that account still correct?
The account number is correct.
Okay.
It's just, should be impacted, stay.
Okay, thank you.
They roughly, where in the park is this gonna be located?
To the north of the tennis courts, in that big open area. And there's a sidewalk leading from the two big pavilions over to the restaurant, maybe to the west of that sidewalk.
Okay.
And then the additional sidewalk, I don't know if it's an additional park.
Great, thank you.
And the size of this one compares to the one at Laurel Park?
Yes, sir.
Good.
This summer, when I was at Laurel Park, visiting with families, and I told them we were gonna try to open up Fifth Avenue, they were really excited about it.
I bet.
Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Passes seven to zero. Thank you, Kiara. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Yes, sir.
Next, we have the Public Service Committee. We have a consideration, this is a good thing, to pay off equipment loan for sanitation. Mr. Winningham?
Get the mic turned on. Excuse me, just in time to cough into it. This loan we had was with US Bank. The way they structured it is they opened up an escrow account, they put the $3 million into that escrow account for us to draw down from as needed. Things turned out a little bit better than we thought it was gonna be. We only drew down a little over 1.8 million of that three. And sanitation fund, as we all know, is very healthy, so we thought if we're not gonna use it all, we might as well look at just paying the thing off and getting rid of it and save it. We've made one payment, we made a payment last year. Actually, we made one this year too, but it just came out of that, the remaining balance in the escrow fund, so the city was not out of pocket anything on the payment this year. But we thought saving future interest costs for the next three years' payments, and since we don't need the funds, let's just, if council's okay with that, we'll just get rid of it.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve, pay off the equipment loan for the sanitation department. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This is seven to zero. Thank y'all. Thank you, Mr. Winningham. Next up, we have an ordinance appropriating funds for the operations shop secure for the Conway PD, and I wanna ask Chief Spradlin to bring y'all up to speed on what happened at our CIOC Center today. Chief?
Which one first?
Let's go with the, and for folks that are out, that are watching on TV, CIOC is our emergency operations center where your 911 calls go.
So, basically, today at the emergency operations center, we had a power failure. We lost all power, all phones, all radio communications, 911 was all gone. So, sort of like we do with tornado sirens every Wednesday at noon, you hear those go off to test the system. Same thing happens at CIOC on Tuesdays. So we have our generator power, it's our backup system, and we ran that as we do every week, and when that switched back over to main power, there's actually a physical switch in that that failed. And it's supposed to switch it over to the main power. It broke, tried to switch back over to generator power, and it kinda went back and forth. This power surge essentially shut us down. That actually shut down the radio servers also, which by the way, since I talked to you 30 minutes ago, that's up and running now. We're 100% on the go now. But they've worked all day, they got it all figured out, we've got a temporary solution to give us power right now. A new switch has been ordered, it cost about $5,700 excluding installation. But to my knowledge, that's probably the original switch with the building also, and that building's going on 18 years old. So, that's essentially what happened with that today. We, that kinda sent us into a tizzy, how to answer phone calls. Fortunately for us at the PD, we have about three former dispatchers that have taken positions at the police department, and a couple officers that are dispatchers. We set them up in our records office, took in, took in phone calls from the public, dispatched them on handheld radios, old school paper logs, you can't beat that. We made it work.
Well, I remember those, was that mine?
Yeah. That's what we were raised on. But, like I said, they kept working on it today, they got the power back, and as they slowly went through the radio servers, they realized it hadn't crashed, they got it rebooted, went through each console, they've been toning the fire stations. I've been getting the text actually as I sit back there, so they're up and operational again.
Is there a way to do, have redundant switches?
That's, I asked that same question.
That's what we're looking at.
The system that's built in for redundancy, they one thrived the other, so they both went out. Now, Harris Communications, is their part gonna be under warranty?
I don't know about that, we'll check into that. Now, I did ask...
Aaron had mentioned that he thought it was.
Okay, I did ask why there was not a redundancy in the server, and they did not know, but they said that the cost of that is approximately a quarter to half million dollars. I would guess that might have something to do with that, is why it wasn't put in RFP. It's what they told me. Now, I don't know if it's just a server alone.
It's gotta be more than that.
It has to be, and that's ridiculous.
That's ridiculously high amount.
Yeah, so, that's what Mr. Kennedy had told me, he works on a radio system, so I don't know why that is, and you're starting to get into IT talk that I know very little about, so.
But people are able to call 911 now.
Oh yeah.
Okay.
Up and running now.
All right, thank you, chief.
Do we need to get another or a new backup generator?
I don't think generator, no.
That was not the problem, and it was the switch.
The problem is not with the generator, it's just the switch. And we're actually looking at a different solution with that too, that way if that one switch fails, then we don't run into the same problem.
Do we need a secondary generator?
I don't think we need a secondary generator.
It's just the switching.
Yeah.
It kept kicking it back from...
We do have routine maintenance on our generator, probably quarterly, and they check those out to make sure those are up and running too, so.
And the electrician who's working on that is gonna update that and bring it up to more modern technology, so hopefully we'll avoid this in the future.
Yeah, it was definitely a learning lesson for us, and things we can do better, and we're gonna try to do that.
Good news is, it wasn't a tornado today.
Exactly.
It wasn't snowing today.
Well, IT and you and Chief Winter both responded quickly and got things taken care of, and I appreciate that. State police helped bring in backup system, UCA helped, so everything that they had planned, should something like this take place, actually worked well, so good job, chief, and the rest of you. Operation Shop Secure, chief?
Well, Christmas is here, if you believe that or not, so we're asking again for $50,000 for overtime funds to continue operation Shop Secure. This is best where we pair police officers in addition to their normal patrol duties. They are paid solely for patrolling our business districts and during the shopping season.
Make a motion to waive the three readings, second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance, which I have as 106.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion?
Since we continue to have additional shopping areas available around town, is this enough money? This is enough for this year. I do have a concern as we grow, that it will not be enough, but I also have an equal concern that we're able to cover it. We do have to lift our overtime restrictions for this. Obviously, we need them well rested when they're on their regular patrol duties, and we're getting to a point to where we're pretty well maxing them out for this. So, 50,000 covers it right now.
So we're needing to talk people at some point in the near future.
Yes.
Do we need an emergency clause on this, chief?
When does it start?
This will start Thanksgiving night, actually.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, Black Friday.
Not even Black Friday anymore, actually.
Mr. Winningham and I visited about this today, chief. We thought in our 2020 budget, we would go ahead and put the $50,000 in the budget, and then if that's not enough, then the chief can come back before y'all, but we know it's gonna be that in our next budget cycle, so this will be part of our regular budget in the future.
Do we need an emergency clause on this, mayor?
For payroll? Mr. Winningham, do they need an emergency clause on this payroll, for payroll?
I would say...
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion?
Since we continue to have additional shopping areas available around town, is this enough money?
This is enough for this year. I do have a concern as we grow, that it will not be enough, but I also have an equal concern that we're able to cover it. We do have to lift our overtime restrictions for this. Obviously, we need them well rested when they're on their regular patrol duties, and we're getting to a point to where we're pretty well maxing them out for this. So, 50,000 covers it right now.
So we're needing to talk people at some point in the near future.
Yes.
Do we need an emergency clause on this, chief?
When does it start?
This will start Thanksgiving night, actually.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, Black Friday.
Not even Black Friday anymore, actually.
Mr. Winningham and I visited about this today, chief. We thought in our 2020 budget, we would go ahead and put the $50,000 in the budget, and then if that's not enough, then the chief can come back before y'all, but we know it's gonna be that in our next budget cycle, so this will be part of our regular budget in the future.
Do we need an emergency clause on this, mayor?
For payroll? Mr. Winningham, do they need an emergency clause on this payroll, for payroll?
I would say...
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion?
Since we continue to have additional shopping areas available around town, is this enough money?
This is enough for this year. I do have a concern as we grow, that it will not be enough, but I also have an equal concern that we're able to cover it. We do have to lift our overtime restrictions for this. Obviously, we need them well rested when they're on their regular patrol duties, and we're getting to a point to where we're pretty well maxing them out for this. So, 50,000 covers it right now.
So we're needing to talk people at some point in the near future.
Yes.
Do we need an emergency clause on this, chief?
When does it start?
This will start Thanksgiving night, actually.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, Black Friday.
Not even Black Friday anymore, actually.
Mr. Winningham and I visited about this today, chief. We thought in our 2020 budget, we would go ahead and put the $50,000 in the budget, and then if that's not enough, then the chief can come back before y'all, but we know it's gonna be that in our next budget cycle, so this will be part of our regular budget in the future.
Do we need an emergency clause on this, mayor?
For payroll? Mr. Winningham, do they need an emergency clause on this payroll, for payroll?
I would say...
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance with emergency clause. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
The emergency clause, Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Passes seven to zero. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Last up tonight, we have a personnel committee, and we will start with the consideration to approve the renewal of dental benefits from Blue Cross Blue Shield, and just following behind that, Ms. Mayberry Williams will be handling all of this.
Okay. On October 22nd, we published an RFP for dental benefits. The Employee Benefits Committee met, reviewed the proposals, completed a weighted evaluation on each proposal. The committee recommends Blue Cross Blue Shields, option 2A and 2B. Blue Cross Blue Shields' original proposal was a rate hold on our current benefits. This proposal puts us in a PPO dental plan, which will lower our premiums by about 6%. And that's the option that the Benefits Committee recommends that we go with. Same dental benefits as we have, it's just a PPO, so it'll be savings to the employee and the city.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this request. Any further discussion?
Plenty of providers in the network?
Yes.
Thank you.
Same providers that were in the other network.
Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes seven to zero. Ms. Mayberry Williams?
Next item is our US ABLE Life Insurance. 2014, we received a two-year rate guarantee. They renewed that again in 2016 for two years, for 2017 and 18, and they've extended that zero increased renewal for one more year at a rate guarantee, a rate hold again, and we request that you approve the renewal of our contract with US ABLE Life for our employee life insurance.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this request, or to approve the renewal of life insurance benefits from US ABLE for 2019. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes seven to zero. Ms. Williams?
Voluntary supplemental benefits. Our current voluntary supplemental benefits provider for the City of Conway informed us there will be no increasing premiums for the benefits provided by American Heritage, American Fidelity, United Teachers, Legal Shield, and the Fidelity Key Gap for the 2019 Plan Year. These voluntary benefits include life, accident, cancer, heart, short-term disability, Legal Shield, ID theft, Key Gap. The Vision Service Plan, VSP, presented us with a four-year rate guarantee for the 2018 VSP rates, so we're still good on that. They will continue to administer Section 125 cafeteria plan free of charge. All voluntary supplemental benefits are 100% paid for by the employee through payroll deductions. We respectfully request that you approve the renewal of our contract with benefit partners to continue to provide voluntary supplemental benefits to the City of Conway employees for the 2019 Plan Year.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the renewal of voluntary supplemental benefits from benefit partners in Flexco for 2019. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes seven to zero. Ms. Williams?
Fitness facility membership. On October 21st, we published an RFP for 219 fitness facility memberships for the City of Conway employees. We received three proposals. The Benefits Committee met and reviewed the proposals and completed a weighted evaluation on each proposal. The committee recommends Sync Fitness, who gave us a bid of $12,000 again last year. There were no complaints on the facility, and they request that you approve the renewal of our contract with Sync Fitness for the 2019 Plan Year.
Second.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to approve, consider...
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
We all received an email from a captain...
Randy Crowe?
Yeah, in the Fire Department with some concerns. Were those addressed? I'm not aware of that email.
It went to my office and you guys, so...
I didn't get it.
I didn't get it.
I did. Yeah, it went to, and there were classes, boot camps weren't offered, there were things that weren't...
When'd you get it?
Well, I just pulled it up. I got it on October 28th. And I had, there were two firefighters on the... And it went to, it says to the City Council, if you got it, then it was on there, that there were no boot camps offered that they could attend, that it would only be for women. If they lose their cards, they have to pay to get new ones at Sync, not at the other one. He's actually continued his membership at 365 Fitness over the other ones, there's better equipment. I mean, I assumed you got this. No, ma'am, I did not.
I left it in the hands of the committee. As you said, there's two firefighters on it, and there's representatives from all departments, PD, and everything else, so I...
I've not heard any complaints from anybody at all, myself.
We can table this and look into it if y'all like, or we can move forward.
Well, I, like I said, I thought that would've gone to the committee, but... No, the committee didn't, we didn't, but we had two firefighters on the committee, and I don't believe they were aware of it. Well, please do.
I have a different question about this. Do we have any way to track usage? I mean, how many people actually use this, and kinda how often? I mean, is anybody doing it?
They swipe their card, I don't know if I can get accurate numbers or not. I know our firefighters are required to work out on duty, that's a requirement of their job. A lot of the police officers use it also.
Well, and that's good, but I know as we are fixing to address our health insurance costs next, I mean, this is a vital piece of that, keeping people healthy before they get sick, and so I'd like to maybe at some point, I know you can't drill down to individuals, but maybe just see some aggregate numbers of how many people do actually utilize...
We can work on that.
Yeah. David, every time I've gone, I will say, I see somebody from the city there. I've seen plan permitting people there, and enforcement, because I was exactly there, firefighters, policemen there, I see them almost every time I go.
Good.
At the gym, they're all working out, and they're always working out on shift, some are working out not when they're on shift.
Yeah, good, I'm glad to hear that.
It's been fairly successful.
Yeah.
So, we can approve this request tonight, or we can table it and look at Mr. Crowe's concerns. It's up to the council.
I mean, if the committee was okay with it, I just wondered if they're, I mean, I guess what I would ask, and I'll be happy to forward the email to you, that we address those concerns with...
Randy Crowe, Captain Crowe?
Who?
Captain Crowe of the Fire Department.
Is the one that sent that. It's hard to believe one employee, though, out of everybody.
We all received an email from a captain...
Randy Crowe.
Yeah, in the Fire Department, with some concerns. Were those addressed?
I'm not aware of that email.
It went to my office and you guys, so...
Okay. I didn't get it.
I didn't get it.
I didn't get it. I did. Yeah, I went to... And there were classes, boot camps weren't offered. There were things that weren't...
When'd you get it?
Well, I just pulled it up. I got it on October 28th.
And I had... There were two firefighters on the...
And it went to... It says to City Council, if you got it, then it was on there. That there were no boot camps offered that they could attend, that it would only be for women. If they lose their cards, they have to pay to get new ones at Sync, not at the other one. He's actually continued his membership at 365 Fitness over the other ones. There's better equipment. I mean, I assumed you got this.
No, ma'am, I didn't know.
I left it in the hands of the committee. As you said, there's two firefighters on it, and there's representatives from all departments, PD, and everything else, so I...
I'm not hearing any complaints from anybody at all, myself.
We can table this and look into it if y'all like, or we can move forward.
Well, I... Like I said, I thought that would've gone to the committee, but...
No, the committee didn't. We didn't. But we had two firefighters on the committee, and I don't believe they were aware of it.
Well, please do.
I have a different question about this. Do we have any way to track usage? I mean, how many people actually use this, and kinda how often? I mean, is anybody doing it?
They swipe their card. I don't know if I can get accurate numbers or not. I know our firefighters are required to work out on duty. That's a requirement of their job. A lot of the police officers use it also.
Well, and that's good. But I know, as we are fixing to address our health insurance costs next, I mean, this is a vital piece of that, keeping people healthy before they get sick. And so, I'd like to maybe at some point... I know you can't drill down to individuals, but maybe just see some aggregate numbers of how many people do actually utilize...
We can work on that.
Yeah.
David, every time I've gone, I will say, I see somebody from the city there. I've seen plan permitting people there and enforcement, 'cause I'm seeing Zach there. Firefighters, policemen there. I see them almost every time I go.
Good.
At the gym. They're all working out. They're always working out on shifts. Some are working out not when they're on shift.
Yeah, good. I'm glad to hear that.
It's been fairly successful.
Good.
Yeah.
So, we can approve this request tonight, or we can table it and look at Mr. Crowe's concerns. It's up to the council.
I mean, if the committee was okay with it, I just wondered if they're... I mean, I guess what I would ask, and I'll be happy to forward the email to you, that we address those concerns with Sync.
Randy Crowe. Captain Crowe?
Who?
Captain Crowe of the Fire Department.
Is the one that sent that. It's hard to believe one employee, though, out of everybody.
Yeah, but he's captain, and he talks about his junior firefighters having issues, so...
Let's just look into that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I would like Sync to address those issues.
Yeah, we can... We certainly will look into it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this request, and Ms. Mayberry Williams is gonna... I will forward Captain Crowe's later to you tomorrow, and she'll address those. Does that work for everybody?
It's fine with me.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Garrett? I'm sorry, Mr....
He was saying yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes seven to zero. And Ms. Mayberry Williams.
Next item is our health benefits. The RFP was published on the city's website and in the paper on October 25th. The proposals were open this morning. The Arkansas Municipal League Health Benefit Fund presented us with the only proposal. They were sent out to major vendors, United Healthcare, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Health Advantage, and so on. There was a... We have a list of the vendors. We sent them to a representative from Health Advantage. Our former medical benefits provider stated his underwriters declined to quote because they were unable to present a competitive quote. A lot of that is due to our loss ratio. Oh, it is due to our loss ratio. The AML benefit fund premium rates will increase approximately 8% on January 1, and this increase is due to our claims experience. The current loss ratio is 124%. The attached...
It's a better loss ratio than we've had in a while.
It seems to be better.
It was 146 cents. It's come down some. It's come down some.
Who knew?
Okay.
And again, prescription drug of what is driving the major cost in our loss ratio problem. The attached spreadsheets shows the current employee and city cost, plus two scenarios of the cost to the city and the impact on the 2019 budget. Scenario number one, the percentage the city and the employee pay remain unchanged. The additional impact on the 2019 general fund budget will be approximately $241,221. Both the premiums the employee pays and the city pays will increase. Scenario number two, the city absorbs 100% of the premium increase. The employee contribution remains unchanged. The additional impact on the 2019 general fund budget will be approximately $285,120. We respectfully request you approve the renewal of our contract with AML Municipal Health Benefit Fund to provide medical benefits to City of Conway employees for the 2019 year, and we request that you determine how the premium increase will be distributed between the city and the employee.
Thank you.
The total of the increase, $285,120?
That's if the city absorbs...
City absorbs it all.
100% of it.
That's just general fund.
General fund, yeah.
What was the total increase in cost? Total increase, doesn't make any difference where it's coming from.
3,000... Excuse me, 370,320, if the city absorbs it all.
Thank you. Mr. Grimes just pointed it out to me.
Oh, okay.
Mayor, what does it look like money-wise for us to absorb all the costs of this, or not?
Well, you know, we've... I think this is the third time we've had to look at this in the last couple of years, and all three times, the cities absorb 100% of it. And I think the last time we did it, I think I told y'all... I'm pretty sure I told y'all that we probably won't ask the city to absorb 100% the next go-round.
Well, we had that discussion last year, and I know David and I both indicated that while we were doing that last year, that this is something that the city might not be in a position to continue to do, so...
Yeah.